Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, I, if it's okay with you guys, um, unless and until we see somebody pop up on there, I'd just as soon shut the mics off. It's okay, like game show host.
On YouTube.
Actually, can they, can they, um, hear the recording? There you go.
Two. Well, has it, it's, I've seen, I haven't checked lately, but these videos were posted on YouTube because I.
Yeah, she's saying that it won't record our audio well. So when they look at YouTube later, I think, I think that's right. Okay, um, so yeah, there was some discussion, Amy couldn't be here tonight, she sent an email saying, refer to my previous email. I did go back and dig that up, I have to do it again right now, it's from like March, I don't think you guys ever received it. So I can pull that up, um, I don't know how we want to do this, I have a list that I brought with me. Um, and if you guys have similar lists, what I was thinking, and I'm open to suggestions, is we could just go around the room and each read our lists like briefly, and then we can kind of see how much they overlap. And start building, I, I think, I think we need to have like a semi reasonable number. Um, even this 2019, 2021 that we have in front of us is, I don't know, I'm guessing 15. And the number of those that we actually got to is probably low. Um, but I'm thinking we probably all have something in common and, um, so I think we could go around and just kind of bullet point what we brought with us and, and kind of as a conversation starter.
Andy, before we do that, could we please talk about the ma- mask policy? Uh, it is a public meeting, so we should address if that policy has expired to make that public knowledge.
So, so the mask policy at PA expired with the end of the school year and also the governors, um, or the, the new guidance that came out yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday, um, said that, um, masks are optional. Uh, and we don't have any public attendance either, so we've got six of us, seven, six of us. Properly spaced, go ahead.
Um, so you stated that, um, it's not at PA, but just to clarify, um, the mask policy is no longer in effect for the entire Pembroke School District?
Yes.
Thank you. And I, can I just add to that just a little bit? Um, so we actually, the, that's, when I sent out the draft plan, I, I tried to say several times that it was draft because our guidance changes so often. Um, we actually got new guidance yesterday afternoon and, um, it was clarified this morning by the commissioner that, um, Department of Public Health is now recommending that masks are optional. So I will be changing the draft of that plan, um, and sending it out again so that those families that are having students attend during the summer will know that the mask policy for the transition period is now optional. Is, even though that policy is now expired, um, I'd like to make an official motion that we rescind that policy so we can get it out of our policy manual. So I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the mask policy.
Right, a discussion?
Again, uh, it's so we can get it out, clean up our policy book, thank you.
Okay, um, all in favor of rescinding the policy in regards to masks at Pembroke School District?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Fantastic.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to go first as far as goals? Well, if nobody else wants to. Go ahead, April.
Um, I really came to listen to some of the goals, my biggest concern is I want to make sure that we're not listing just hopes and dreams, we need to have benchmarks. Do we come with data to support the goals that we're proposing? Do we have steps on how to achieve these goals? I feel like this is a deeper conversation than just tonight. I feel like this is something that's going to start us off and just keep in mind based on our training last week that once we have district goals, we can use those to help set goals for our superintendent. So I'm here mostly to listen, thinking we have more work, also really wishing that Amy was here because she shared some really great ideas with us in the future and I certainly don't want her to be not included in this conversation. Thank you.
Hey, sorry, I'm just looking for Amy's email, if there's anybody that wants to jump in, go right ahead.
I would say it's a lot like the same as, um, as April. If we do have a goal, say like this one here for budget, provide a budget in the most transparent way, you know, for students, faculty, it doesn't give us any way of benchmark to say that we achieved it.
Right, or even any, um, you know, we will do this by this period, right? We will have this done, uh, we need baby, you know, we need things along the way to assure we're going to meet that goal. Um, if we don't provide ourselves steps to get there, then we may not make the goal and I think it's important, if we think it's important enough to make the goal that we take the steps to make sure we do everything we can to achieve it.
Right, and, and I would agree, I don't think that that's all going to be done tonight, but I, the, the way that I think about this is tonight's what things do we care about, right? And then we take those steps when we, when we start meeting again in August. Um, I think we should have one or two of our goals on every single agenda. And when we have those on there, that's when we really root it out. And so if we say, you know, a budget that's transparent is possible. Tonight we set that as that's our goal for next budget season to have a transparent budget. And then when we start talking in August about the budget, that's our main focus and, and we, how do we do that? We decide that, or if we say, whatever, I, I think to, we need to find the areas that we're going to focus on. And then when they come up on the agenda, um, again, which I think should be routine, it, that's when we get into the nitty gritty and make sure we have our benchmarks and our, how, how are we evaluating this? But you're right, we can't do that all tonight.
Right, we need a roadmap to get there.
And, and I think it's, I think it's even prudent too to say, I mean, we could assign them if you guys want, but I would say that we should look at them over the summer and, and if, if there's a goal that anybody is particularly interested in, um, dig into it when you've got some free time, when we get back together in August and September, then we can say, okay, here's what I've been thinking about these and, you know, let's, let's figure it out, so.
I just don't want to come with, we will have the best school district in the state and we have no way that we're going to support that or make that happen. Um, so.
If we did, we could beat them.
That's true.
Um, so I, I guess I, I have, uh, a very limited list, um, because again, I don't want to see 30 goals, I want to see 10, 12 maximum, something that's workable. Um, so, you know, one of my things that I've been pushing out there over the years is to get a culture climate survey out to students, teachers and residents, um, to show our strengths and our weaknesses. We find those out, we know what to work on, make ourselves better and the things we can expand upon to continue the good work that our schools, administration, teachers do at this point in time. Um, and then going back, you know, measuring our goals, like Barrett said, I already, already had this one. We need to revisit them, whether it's every other meeting or every meeting, or put it on the, you know, one or two on each agenda to power our way through them. Um, and the third goes to what Ann was talking about, budget. And Andy and I talked about it a little bit too, uh, and he's got a really good idea about it. How he looks forward with the budget this year. Because we come out with the budget every year and it's like, okay, here's the budget. Then we bring it to the budget committee. And then the budget committee says, well, da, 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 you know, it was down this whole list. Then we bring it back and then they revise it, it comes down a little bit. You know, this happens three or four times. So I'll let Andy explain maybe, you know, what, what he had told me about his idea for moving the budget forward. Sure. As one of our goals. So I can't really even say it's my idea, one of the principals mentioned it to me once by the time and I can't, it, it was either John or it may have been Suzie Griffiths, I can't, I honestly can't remember. Um, but what they, uh, we were just having a general discussion about budgets and what the comment that they made and hopefully I'm not taking it too literally, was that they could come up with budgets for whatever target we wanted. And it was expressed that it wouldn't be an enormous lift to say, you know, if the board asks for, bring me a budget that is 3% higher than last year, bring me a budget that's flat from last year, bring me a budget that's 3% less from last year. Um, that we could see those and, and, and I think the important part for that is we could see what that money buys us, I guess, or, and the community can see that, like, it's a, obviously it's not a dollar for dollar, this is exactly what these are always going to be spent on thing and there's always things that get moved, but you could see, okay, if we go 3% less than we had last year, that's going to mean whatever, one and a half fewer teachers or we're going to cut the music program or whatever, and 3% more means things are pretty much the same, but we have a technology, like whatever. Um, but if, I don't know, and I don't know if Patty would say it's more work than I'm making it sound like, but if it's possible to see kind of multiple sets of numbers or at least estimates of those, um, I think that would be helpful for us. So just an idea. And that really speaks to the transparency of the budget too. You can see peritively what's going to happen. At the way we do it now, it's, here we are, budget committee. We got to cut something, then it gets to the point where, okay, if we do this, if we do what the budget committee wants, or if we want to have a minus three, who are we going to lose? We're going to lose people at that point, and it becomes really real, so if we have this budget ready to go, you know, it, it's real for everybody involved. Us or, you know, the, the taxpayers that are seeing this. Yep.
So, um, years ago, that was an approach that the NBC and the school board took and it was absolutely helpful. It was probably John because he's been here and he would have gone through that, um, time period. And the NBC stopped doing that at one point, um, really trying to be respectful of their duty because as they know, their duty is to advise us on where to cut and they felt like, you know, we, they told us we could have 24 million, we, we would not know what to do with that without them advising us. But I think there's a middle ground for us to say, no, we really would like to be collaborative with you and we really would like to work on a number that we think both, both sides could support. And rather than multiple versions of a budget, which would be, um, an enormous task, I might suggest that we put together the budget and then we do something like we've done in the past with if this budget was $500,000 left, less, do a spreadsheet, like these are the things that we would cut if it was 500 and then. So it's not multiple versions of the budget, but I think, I think that's a great idea that this is, this is what you would get and this is what we would be cutting out on each tier.
Right, that makes sense.
That we present, maybe.
Go ahead.
Um, well, just from sitting on budget, budget committee doesn't advise you where to cut because they can't say, okay, you cut 15 teachers if you need to cut this amount of money. They just come in and say, this is the amount of money that the taxpayers can truly afford. So they can't tell you where to cut, they can tell you the amount. But the other thing too is this, going through this budget last year on the school board, we didn't go line for line. The town, we go line for line. We go and they need to come to us and say, I need to go, I need an extra hundred dollars from last year, from PD. And we say, okay, why? And they really need to explain it. Then we tell them, well, the taxpayers can't give us an extra hundred dollars, where are you going to take it from? So that's, we need to have, we need to show the public that we are really having input as a school board, line per line. And I know it's hard when we have, when we get to fixed costs, but, you know, Amber always outlines fixed costs, you know, health insurance, life insurance, all that good stuff, Hampshire Retirement System. But some of the other items, we need, we really need to have information, I need another chair? Okay, why? You know, that kind of thing, so I think more information on the budget is perfect, but I would also like to see more information in the town report. The town puts in how many employees we have, how much we're paying in their Medicare, how much we pay them for insurance, um, not insurance, that's, we can't tell, do that. But if you pull up a report, I didn't bring one with me, it has in there, every single PD we have, my salary's in there as a selectman. Every single person is in there and the amount of money that the person's getting paid. We do have a chart that says, you know, this level, this level, this level. And we do have a chart that says, um, in our budget book, we do have a chart that says, Anne Bond kindergarten teacher, 23,000 a year. But that doesn't go to the public, that doesn't go to the town meeting on Saturday. So if we have it in the book and the town pays to print the book, so it's not additional fee for the school board to put the information in there that we have, same as employees for the town. Just my suggestion.
Yep, um, I think I'm on board with a lot of that, I think, I think one difference with the town, um, and I think I did a poor job explaining this last year and since we had new people and we had not really any normalcy between, between the beginning of our term year and when we started looking at budget is we just, so it is our responsibility to go line by line. Um, we don't typically do that in meetings is all, and so the reason I say that I think that this is partially my dropping the ball on explaining this is because there wasn't a ton of questions, right? When we were here in the meetings and we had Amber and she'd give us the report and are there any questions? And there might be three or four, but it certainly wasn't extensive. And that's kind of how, and I'm not saying this is how we have to do it, but how it's been done in the past is between meetings, we should be going through that line by line by line and saying, oh, this doesn't look right, what's up with this? Why is, you know, why is this going up 150% from last year or whatever? And then bringing those to the meeting so they amperate. And if we find things that are like, I guess elevated concern, we can certainly, as long as there's some notice, ask Patty to have, you know, if it's a library thing, we can have the librarian come in that requested it, we can have whoever we need. Um, I know that Clint has told me that in the past they had done a thing that he referred to as Bloody Saturday, where they had an all day budget meeting on a Saturday and did a lot of that stuff. So I mean, I suppose that's an option, I think it's just what, what the board wants to do, I'm kind of up for everything and I, I spend way too much time in that damn binder during that season already. But anything that you guys want to do as far as that process, um, I would just caution, depending on how our meetings are when we come back in the fall, you know, I, I would rather not start being here till 11 or 11:30 at night again. Um, I'd prefer a, a one or two time shot on a weekend or whatever, but, but I'm open to any suggestions as far as the process. As, as, as far as the budget goes, as a goal, right? I think the wording here, this previous goal, budget, I think the wording's great. At this point in time, it's, you know, we, a goal shouldn't have the exact specifics, but you know, these are ideas that were bannered. The wording of the.
I, I would say the wording is, is fine and then what you do is you have how you're going to achieve it. So this is the goal and these are A, B, C, D.
And, and that's, I think, what would come in, uh, if we start discussing it like as, in, in our actual meetings as we put one or two on each one of the meetings. Okay, so provide a budget in the most transparent way, apparent way possible that supports and sustains student facility, faculty performance that is responsible and affordable for the taxpayers. And then as we bring this forward in our meeting, which will be pretty early to start, you know, we can set out those parameters that we.
Right, on how we're going to achieve, because every employer makes us do goals. We have to have four goals and we have to say what it is and how we're going to achieve it and when we're achieving it.
Yeah. All right.
Easy question, do we have any more printed goals from the past? Um, board, because I'm having trouble accessing the Google Drive. No. Thank you.
So just, um, I, I, I think you're right, Jeanette, like we talked about, I think we need to hammer out details, but I, what I've jotted down here, and I don't know, Sandy's got better notes anyway, but I ju- I jotted down budget process and information that's presented to the public, I think that's a key too, is what, what are we putting out there and when?
Sorry, I was going to hit on when, because sometimes it's not timeliness, I've been on the board where of what the board's going to propose has changed, the meeting before. We get to the townwide meeting, the school, you know, townwide school district meeting. And so I think the sooner we can arrive at that information and stick to a budget, probably the better, right? We're communicating what we're proposing, um, so the when is important as well, not just as transparent, but the timing.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
It might be helpful for us also to review what we did accomplish because I think when this goal was put in place for 1920 and we were talking about transparency, I think, um, you know, probably the year before there, there was some information on the website, but the public was, I was providing it because they were emailing me, can I have this, can I have this? And it was fast and furious trying to get them everything they needed, so we did put, um, tabs on the website. So I think the transparency piece is worth noting that we completely revamped the way we did the process and every single time the board had a packet, a budget packet after the meeting, it was on, posted for the public. So I think the transparency piece, some of that was addressed, um, by making every single document that the board got available to the public too.
Can we put the whole packet that we give the budget committee? That whole book, can we put that on, under the budget?
Not knowing a lot about websites, I would assume so, I don't know if there's a limit on how many pages you can, is it, is many pages as you want?
Yeah.
Because when people come to the budget committee, we do have some people who do come in, you know, the audience, um, they don't, they have no idea what we're talking about.
Go ahead, April.
Uh, I'm curious, there, you know, it's one thing putting the information out there and yes, that, that was achieved, another thing, it's how user friendly is the website? And that is something that this board does not have direct control over. Um, I have heard a rumor, but it's only a rumor that there may be an update. Okay, could you want me to do that now?
Could you speak to that?
Sure.
That may also help us with transparency. So, um, we had talked about that, I think, a year ago and that, before the pandemic, obviously. Um, but Josh had, um, the IT directors got together and they were all interested in revamping websites and I let Josh know that that was both Pembroke and Deerfield, that was something the boards wanted to have the websites redone. So they have, um, had several meetings and looked at several options, chose someone that seemed to be, um, affordable and had a good product to offer. So they actually did narrow down, um, and he's about to do a contract with them, um, and start that work. And then once, um, I think the, once they do some work this summer, we're going to give stipends, um, to tech coordinators to come in over the summer and work on that. Um, and then we will be putting in place the stipend that all of you authorized to hire someone to do that posting and be available to us. Um, two of the tech integrators in Pembroke agreed to share that responsibility for that stipend. But like I said last year, um, sort of through everything, we needed our tech people 24/7 for online learning. But we are absolutely almost ready to go with that, so that will help a lot.
That's really good news because that is, and it's, it's not, I, I don't, I don't blame Josh Berube or anybody, it's SharePoint, SharePoint's awful. Um, I'm going to use this opportunity to segue and I don't mean to jump, jump before your list, Jean, but I think it's a related conversation, um, I'm anxious to hear what the rest of you have to say. I, I'd want to get Barrett's input, um, but I am thinking that we should have, um, Facebook presence. I think it should be very narrow, I think, no, and actually some of this is on the old goals. Um, comments should never be turned on and it should be informational only. But I think, I mean, we've seen this, this past couple of years, a good chunk of the community is on Facebook and you know, if, if we're hosting the meeting agenda on the website, there's no reason it can't be on Facebook too. If we're posting the budget binder, um, you know, the town actually, uh, David had somebody from town that was kind of acting as a, I don't know, social media liaison, for lack of a better term, that before the town meeting this year was getting all of that budget information out onto the town Facebook pages and a lot of people relied on that. So certainly not anything that should ever be controversial or argumentative or anything like that, but just as another vehicle to, you know, I, pals and different people at the schools like Sandy already post if it's a snow day or something like that, um, and I don't know that we have to get into that, but meeting times, meeting changes, additional meetings being added, um, you know, anything that we think the public might be interested in from our goings on, I think would be decent to have on there. And we'd have to decide who's going to manage it and how we approve what we're going to post, but we can iron that out later, but I, I, I would be interested in that if you guys would.
Yep, and also have sidebars on the page that shows calendars, you know, school board calendars, SAU meeting calendars. Um, you know, all the other subcommittees that I think that calendar would, on there also would be helpful.
Would that be something that would go to per employee like a tech creator or would that? Well, they're, they, I think all the schools have Facebook pages that are basically non-interactive, but I'm talking about one specifically for the. Yeah, I mean, I, I. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, I guess for continuity's sake, somebody would have to have the password other than just a board member. And I don't know, I would maybe nominate Kathy or whoever, but.
Yeah, Josh tip, we, that is part of the social media policy that no one can have a personal account. Um, but that Josh could set up a Facebook page or somebody could, um, or the board. Um, Deerfield chose to have one of the committee, you know, the list of duties that you just voted on, there's actually someone that does communications and is in charge of that on the board and can push things out, so we can set that up if that's something that's interesting.
Yeah.
Can I just say the chair of the selectmen does it? So maybe the chair of the school board could it?
I mean, I'd be happy to at least to get it off the ground. And it, you know, again, as far as ironing out details in the future, the way that I kind of envision this is there are routine things, you know what I mean? Every week, every meeting, you post these things after the meeting and, and every month you post these things on this date. And then, but then during budget time, there will be some extra stuff and it might be a thing where we have to discuss it at a meeting and say, hey, I think these are, these four things should go to the Facebook page and everybody says yes, and then we, you know.
So I don't want to get into the weeds too much about that, I absolutely support that idea and I think we should hash out what should be posted on there because what I heard, um, Mr. Christina advise is, um, you know, sing the praises of the districts, things that are going well, if you win a game, put that on there, if someone wins an award, put it on there because we need to, one thing we have consistently heard, which will help us with the community and also with transparency is when children do not have children in the school district, they often don't know what's going on, we really need to focus on building a community school. And something like that, just, we need to make sure it's not dry school board meeting agenda. We want to celebrate our accomplishments, like, you know, our superintendent has said, what are our achievements? We should sing them loud and proud because we know that, you know, certainly the news media does not do that for Pembroke.
Yep, I agree, I just added that to my notes, so I, for that topic, I just wrote school board Facebook page, information and promotion of district.
Thank you.
Um, and, and I think, and it, this could change at any time and I will say I'm not a huge social media person, so I don't have my finger on the pulse. Um, I don't think we want to go to Instagram and whatever else is out there. Um, but if there ever comes a point in the future where Facebook is not being used as much anymore, we certainly could revisit and switch to whatever the most appropriate single source is, but right now I think that's still Facebook. I think I should say sadly after that, but.
Andy, I had a, another question.
Sure.
Communications, um, Amy brought it up on one of her goals also is the board packet, complete board packet. We have right now things added at the last minute as I'm driving from home, which is three minutes, maybe four minutes. By the time I get here, something else has been added to the packet. Um, and it's hard if the residents are going to have access to this packet and then we come in and we start presenting something else different or additional. I know stuff comes up at the last minute, like resignations and, you know, things like that, but a pa- I mean, for me, I was very discouraged the whole year because it's a setting up for failure. If I'm not able to read this packet at least two days prior, then I'm not coming with all the information and, and research or questions that you can't really ask while you're in a meeting and especially when we were doing Zoom or whatever that was.
I think in the, in the past, that was always the goal, was to have everything ready and in the drive, um, by Friday. And I think last year was just an anomaly, especially if we were meeting every week and we're all going back and trying to do our jobs and then all of a sudden, you know, if you met on a Tuesday, all of a sudden three days later, whatever the task was, was supposed to be done and in the drive, it, I think it was just the pandemic.
Right.
Um, and all the work that had to be done, but, um, typically I think that that was a goal that we could meet, but like you said, you know, a resignation might come in, something easy that we could, you know.
And then the Friday before?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, absolutely.
I do know that, just to throw in, I did find Amy's email, we'll go over that at some point, but I know that she, something she was going to push for is to push that deadline back. Um, but being the one that works with Kathy and Patty on the agendas, I can say there's, it, that's, there's not a whole lot better we can do. Um, you know, resignation could pop up the same day, like you said, but between Friday and Tuesday already, there's, there's changes. If we pushed that back to say Tuesday or, Tuesday or Monday of the week prior, it, there would just be constant changes all the time.
But is there a way that we can say, because we didn't receive this information, because the selectmen, it's, it's one whole week before the meeting and we're totally different atmosphere, one whole week, and if you didn't get it to us by then, you're on the next one.
And I, so I, I'm responsible for reading those out and I try to do that as much as I can. Um, where the line is between what's urgent and has, I mean, there are some things that Patty brings me over the weekend even in a text that we have to take action on or either it's going to cost us money. over the weekend even in a text that we have to take action on or either it's going to cost us money or somebody's not, we had hires or whatever. Um, so, you know, we could discuss where kind of that line is. I do try to say, not even Friday, like for the documents, but I usually, Kathy usually gets me the agenda on Wednesday and I usually get it back to her on Wednesday, most of the time Thursday. Um, but after I've approved that, then I'm, I'm pretty strict about trying not to add any more agenda items unless Patty says we have to have action on this. And I've caught in flag for that too, from, not from the board, but from community members. And, you know, there's people that email and say, hey, I really want, want you guys to talk about this. And, you know, it's two days before the meeting, like, sorry, that's just not how it works.
Um, I believe we have a policy on that. I'm looking that up right now.
We do. I don't remember the.
Yeah, so I'm looking into that. Um, but also what I am, um, there's a policy BHD dissemination of information. So we might want to take a look at that. Um, so it may be as simple as not a goal, but putting this on, this is a policy that needs to be changed. Or could it be a directive, um, to our superintendent to make sure. My concern also that I've heard is the agenda's posted, but the supporting documentation is not for public review. Um, a lot of other public meetings that I've tuned into, that information is available, not just the agenda. And I understand not, you know, things come up. That's what I'm hearing. We understand that. But we also know when things are going to be discussed, just to have it right there. One click, you have the agenda, you can have the whole packet just for ease of information. And again, to promote transparency because we hear it all the time. So, um, but I'm going to take a look at this policy.
I added that as a note too, to have the documentation get posted along with the agenda whenever possible. And hopefully again, having, um, a Facebook presence and a new website will help get that stuff out.
I think it will, you know, after a few times of people being frustrated, I think word will spread. If you, if you don't have something in before X date, then the board's not going, like Anne said, you know, you just say, well, you didn't get it to us in time, so we're not going to address it tonight. And I think people are, it's, it's, it's hard on our end too because we're constantly, you know, getting items that people want to either discuss or bring documents or, um, it's just, people will get used to it, I think, if we, if we set that policy and this is the way it is.
Essentially that, that would be if you're getting them on Wednesday, essentially that deadline should be Tuesday then, right?
Yes.
And like, you know, for agenda items.
Yep.
So essentially there is a deadline there now. Do we have to put it at Tuesday?
Or the week before.
The week before.
It's a different day. Yep. I just don't want us to create additional work if all that our superintendent needs is a clear directive from us because I'm pretty confident.
Thank you.
That, yeah, I'm pretty confident if we let her know what we want, she'll work to make that happen. But she needs direction for us to do that.
Okay. So for that, I, I currently just have, um, board packet in a timely manner, goal of posting on Friday. Review, I only got three of the letters April. It's BHD? Okay. I got review policy BHD and post documentation along with agenda. And again, these are very informal and we'll say these notes anyway, so I'm not sure why I'm even writing them, but. Uh, Jean, did you have more? Okay. Um, do you guys have specifics or do you want me, want me to run through Amy's quick? And see which one of those, which ones of those we might want to discuss a little more in depth?
Andy, do you want to go through, I mean, you're here, you're present.
Sure.
I mean, I'd like to hear from everyone who is here first before we, um, take on Amy's. That's not to exclude hers, but I just want to make sure people who are here deserve the time to talk about.
Sure.
What's important. Thank you.
I'll, I'll run through these like quick. I think there's about 10. Um, maybe I'll give a sentence or two of what my thoughts are on each one, and then you guys can tell me which ones you want to actually talk about and which ones you don't. So board Facebook presence, already talked about it, culture, climate survey, Jean already talked about it. Um, so I've got mine separated into, so this is community, I guess, focused goals. The last one I have in there, and this was just a random idea I had, is a, um, kind of a standing quarterly invitation to, um, the chief at the PD to join, to come to one of our meetings and just give us a update. And I mean, we have a resource officer in the schools and, um, just to, you know, anything he might share. And if he were to say, I don't need to come this time, I'd be cool with that too. But, you know, is there a new vape product that might be at the schools that we need to know about? Or, um, did he see something really cool happen in the hallways and another student helping another student? Or just what, you know, what does the school need to know from the police department? I think, I think quarterly would be plenty. I don't think we need to do it super often, um, but that was just an idea.
I know he would welcome it.
Yeah. I mean, even if, you know, input on traffic after, after the beginning of the school year, what worked, what didn't, that type of stuff. They're, they're involved in our community, so I think they should have a voice at these meetings. Um, under administrative, which is kind of our stuff, I had revised meeting agenda. Um, so just, you know, more or less information, we had kind of discussed with, with Barrett, the possibility of not time limits, but time guidelines for each item or whatever, which I did briefly for a little while. So any, any, um, recommendations on setting up the agenda? I would like to see, um, like we talked about, a policy subcommittee. Um, I think that's a good idea. I think policy, again, this was a weird year, so it's kind of hard to even compare. Um, but I think having a couple of people assigned to review policy before they're actually brought to the board would cut down on meeting length. And, and to, I think April made the point last time, one of the initial items that committee could do is just going through and finding all the obsolete ones or the ones that we don't need or outdated or whatever, just wiping them off the books. Um, that would be a good job done. I also had increased presence at SAU and AREA board meetings. I'm guilty of this one. If I'm not assigned to that committee, I typically don't go. Um, but those have been sparsely attended, I think by all of the boards in the SAU and the AREA lately. And I'd like to see us be kind of a, a presence at them and just show that we, you know, do care and are interested in all the goings on of both of those groups. And then the last one for kind of administrative things is, um, working collaboratively, collaboratively with Patty to nail down, um, an evaluation model or, and/or goals. Um, and then the last category I had was facilities. So I think we need to start fairly soon when we get back. Um, talking about the possible addition at the Hill School. Um, I would like to revisit, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I'll go back in the minutes and get it. I'd like to revisit the topic of, um, the Grange Building. We still own that and the gentleman, um, I worked with him fairly closely before everything went south. And he indicated that as long as we own it, because we are a, a nonprofit or not-for-profit or something, um, it is eligible for significant grants. And he actually used to write those grants as part of his job and offered his services for free to help us do that. And he thought that it was reasonable to assume we could get $25,000 or more in, um, money to fix that building up. Um, so I'd, I'd like to explore that a little bit. Kim Garvin, thank you. And then the last one I had on there, um, was, and, and this, this one I'm kind of sketchy with because I don't, these should be board goals and not other people's goals, but I would like to get kind of a comprehensive facilities update, um, maybe monthly, maybe like every other meeting. And that doesn't mean Josh necessarily has to be here. He could write something up and you could bring it. Um, but, you know, I was thinking the last couple of meetings, we've authorized like a half million dollars to go into the facilities, um, which I think was all needed and I support, but I'd love just an update on what, you know, which of those projects are done, which are in progress, which is coming up. Um, you know, what floors are we ripping up over February break, stuff like that. Um, again, I think it helps with transparency and community seeing where that money's going. And, um, I don't think that people that come in the building have any question that Josh's team does a good job of keeping these facilities in great shape. But to April's point, not everybody in the community comes in these buildings. So, um, I'd like to hear kind of just what's going on with facilities from a, from a 5,000 foot view. So those are the ones that I had. I don't know if there's any of them that you want to dive into more right now, or any you want to throw out.
Can I comment on your agenda?
Sure.
Um, revision, just to, I just want to let you know, because, um, some of you haven't been around, um, for a whole long time. At one point, the board talked about when, so we used to only have two meetings a month during budget season, when the budget was going to come, one, it would be a business meeting and then the next meeting would be just budget. Um, then we went to two meetings per month and we started talking about having the business meeting, the first meeting, and then the next meeting would be sort of a topic or something that we were going to deal with. So that might be something to think about for the future, that the first meeting of the month is our, a more traditional meeting and the, um, we get all the board reports and the updates, but maybe that only happens once a month. So that the second meeting of the month, you can focus, focus in more because the, when you go through the typical agenda, all of those items, they just take time.
Right.
You know, and they, the time starts to add up when you have that full page of business. So if you, it's just a thought of the things that we have talked about in the past, trying.
I.
Like initially, it was, it was like one meeting was like normal and the next was just basically a work session.
That must've been, you were here and I wasn't.
Yeah. It was, it was, but you were here then.
Yeah, he's, he's the.
Well, that's what planning does. The first meeting is just pure workshop. The second meeting is applications and residents. And, um, I think that's a great idea. But I would also like to add that we put in our calendar an extra meeting because you know, budget committee is going to say.
Yep.
Do X, but we don't, now we don't meet for another two weeks and that just boils.
Yep. I, I agree. And we added a couple this year and, um, I think, I, we've already approved it as your schedule, right?
Yep. And it wouldn't have to be a full meeting. It would just be workshop.
Probably like a week.
Cancel it too. If you didn't need it, but at least you have it scheduled.
Probably the week, so we usually, I'm assuming, assuming they're going to be on Thursdays again.
Yes.
Um, I would say if we don't have a meeting the Tuesday directly after, and we probably can't schedule it now because we don't know their calendar. But we usually meet with them just before Christmas, right? Like middle of December for the first time. So if, if the holidays allow, I would say if we meet with them on a Thursday and there's not already a meeting scheduled for that next Tuesday, we should have one. Again, with the exception being if that Tuesday's Christmas Eve or something, but.
Do you want me to ask David if the budget committee has their calendars ready yet?
Uh, you can. I mean, I, I'm, they're pretty good about keeping me in the loop on those emails. Um, and I did let them know. So, uh, Mark did a kind of a, what do you call, a postmortem on the budget season. And I did let him know that, that I was a budget guy again, that Jean was the alternate again. Um, so I think I'm still on the mailing list, but, but yeah, you can certainly.
I don't recall ever having seen the budget committee's calendar prior to like, I want to say like maybe towards the end of September.
Yeah, it's usually towards like the end, uh, the end of CIP, I think. They, but I said, I think it's usually towards like the end of the CIP, but before budget actually kicks off.
Yeah, CIP is the end of August.
Like the CIP.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But either way, I mean, and if, you know, if we get, if we get the budget schedule in September, we can add a meeting then. I just, I think to Anne's point, it's better to add it as soon as we know, rather than wait and try to scramble and find a night that it works for everybody. Cause obviously it didn't work well last year.
It's been the same for as many years as I can remember. So I can't imagine they would change it.
Yeah.
From those Thursday meetings.
Yeah, they will be Thursdays. Um, Andy, I had a question when you were talking about the Hill School. And I've done research, but I'm sure not extensive as the architect. But is it set in stone that we're going to add to the Hill School?
No. We would have to decide that. So we have the presentation from, um, Kevin's group and that was a lot of information. I've gone through most of it fairly carefully. Um, but I mean, we, we as a board would have to decide that. And it's, there's a lot of factors involved as far as.
Is, isn't Three Rivers the earliest, the youngest building of all?
I thought the, didn't the board make a decision and that's why we went forward with that committee? Because the committee presented opt, the options committee and then it changed, it moved into the Hill, um, expansion committee. It started out with.
Yeah, I guess I can't remember officially what the, what the motion was. I'd have to go back and look. You could be right.
There's probably reports too. Weren't there Sandy to talk about all of the things that the committee considered and why they came to that recommendation? So we should.
Yeah. I mean, I know I can say for me, because I was on it, the original committee to close Village, our, our charter, our instruction was to offer some options. And we, we recommended that the best course of action was to close Village School and eventually add on to Hill. I don't think, I'm pretty sure, right before the modulars were gone. Now, I'm, I'm 99% sure that was obviously not binding. Um, but I don't know after that.
I think that's something we have, that has to be done this year.
Right.
That has to be done.
And that might be the first step, Anne, is just decide if we're, you know.
Right. Because Allentown got that wonderful grant.
Right.
You know, to build their school.
And that, you know, that's going to, building aid is going to play in, like, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. And I think that's why I would say out of everything on my list here, that's something that we at least need to have some discussions on as soon as we get back because Jean's right. I mean, the way Pembroke historically has done things, it's taken more than one bite at the apple to get something approved.
Yes.
Um, so we, I think we want to try to get it on the warrant this year. Um, what year are we, we're in the third? We just finished the third year of the modules or the second?
No, second.
Second. So by the time March meeting comes around next year, we'll be three deep into a five-year lease.
Um, but talking about that, even if a previous board elected to get more information about an addition at Hill School, there's nothing preventing this board from getting information about options of building on at Three Rivers. We still have the ability to do that. Our hands are not tied.
Yep.
And I think that would be prudent for us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Personally.
I guess you said Three Rivers as in like adding on to Three Rivers instead of that to accommodate.
Right.
The whole elementary at Three Rivers.
Right. I've never heard that presented, I mean, since I've been attending board member meetings and before I was on the board and when I haven't heard about what would it look like if there was to be an expansion and it be K through eight at Three Rivers? And I think we need to see what are the options. I think it's silly to just consider one. It, it would be nice, you know, to know what are the pluses and minuses of both.
Right. And I know that, that was discussed at one point. It's been a while, but I think that the, I, I think the big concern there was not so much the ability to add on at Three Rivers as much as, um, we'd be abandoning another building and, um, the market wasn't great for Village School. And so, so we'd have an empty building, I guess. That, that was the concern that, I don't remember when that was. I'll have to go back and look.
And there would be nothing to prohibit, let's say that did happen in the future, there's nothing to stop a board from holding on to a property.
Right.
You know, that's decisions that have to be made in the future, just like what this board will do when it comes time about additions.
Well, Amy, my question is why would we have an abandoned building? If we were only looking to add.
No, because this was to accommodate all students.
Right, K through eight.
K through eight at.
At Hill?
At Three Rivers.
At Three Rivers, yeah. And you could, and so somebody also did present, well, what, could we add a couple of grades on to Three Rivers? But the community pushback always has been there. There was a lot of people that did not like moving fifth grade up there because it's still technically elementary school. They thought that their kids were too little to be with the eighth graders. So I think if we tried to put three and four up there, I think they'd have our heads. Or at least that, that's, that's been the community sentiment in the past. In fact, we, we looked at, um, could we move eighth grade from Three Rivers over to PA? Because at one point there was extra room here and then move fourth up. And then we'd have more room for K through three at Hill. And we heard just from mentioning that in one school board meeting, we had parents of eighth graders going, my kids are not going to be up there with those big kids. Um, so I, it's certainly not, I'm, I'm certainly not dashing anything or saying we can't look at those options. Just, I know, just sharing my historical opinions I've gotten back in the past when those things have come up.
So how do people feel with their kindergarten or being exposed to an eighth, to an eighth grader? Cause that's what Allentown's doing.
Right. I have, I don't know. And I don't know how that's laid out. I know when I was in school, we, um, there was a K through eight school and it was one building, but they were bait, like there was a, the, the district office, what would be the SAU office was in the middle of the building. And it was like K through whatever was on one side and the rest of it on the other.
Well, just like the junior high at Bedford.
Yeah.
It's on the facility of the high school, but you know, there's, there's organization there. We, I mean, we just don't have a circus running our students.
Right.
Yeah, we have, well, Chichester, Epsom and Deerfield are all K eight schools.
Yeah.
And in Deerfield at least, the primarily the elementary occupies the first floor and the middle school's upstairs.
Yeah.
Most of the time. You know, I think part of that is human nature. We won't be able to change. Many times people don't, change can be uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, even talking in our certain first exposure to hearing about it might not be comfortable. So, you know, I think the board has to do what they believe is in the best interest of Pembroke children.
So either way, so we, we, we don't want to get stuck in the nitty gritty.
You got it.
Of one of these. Um, so that's a goal right there that really needs to be addressed this year because we're entering year three on the portables. So, you know, we can certainly look at Three Rivers, but we can't, we can't let that. you know, we can certainly look at Three Rivers, but we can't, we can't let that delay the Hill School, what, you know, a proposal we may put forth for the, the Hill School. Because we don't wanna have to enter into another, and I don't know if this is true, if we can do it year by year on the portables or if it's gotta be another four or five year contract. You know, we don't want to have to enter into that without doing everything we can to promote, uh, the renovation of Hill.
Right. My, my concern is to make sure that this board does the work, um, to make sure they're providing, um, the best options, even financial options. Obviously, you know, dealing with the building, the age of the Hill School in the sixties versus it's the nineties for Three River. Um, you know, we don't even, we, we can't even compare apples to oranges because we don't have enough information. So I think it would be prudent to get information. But I agree with Jean, um, just as a goal, maybe explore options for elementary age students. And we can hash out the rest as we go along.
Yep, I'm good with that. Um, so I think that was my list. I, if, if anybody's got new thoughts, we can do those or I can go through Amy's list and see what she has that we may not have.
So I, I, I think, you know, after the last meeting, we were pretty much, we talked a little bit about policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
So I think that, that's something that we could add on here and get that, you know, we can just add that in, in as another committee position on, on the, on the list. Um, then uh, the Grange is already on here, on this original.
Oh, was that, I missed that.
Yep.
My bad.
Very last item.
Then, yes, we, we have to, you know, work with Patty to set up a, an evaluation process for her.
I meant to say when I said that one too, that we should also work with, um, the SAU board.
Yeah.
So obviously, I mean, I think our role, our role, you know, we can help Patty find goals and we can evaluate those goals later. Um, but then I think our role is to provide that kind of information up to the SAU board, since they're the ones that officially have to do it anyway.
Yeah, we absolutely have to do, because you are not only Deerfield and Pembroke, but also Superintendent of SAU.
Go ahead, April.
As far as, um, big umbrella wish lists, um, would love to have, um, don't have the details, but how do we have more effective meetings? I think that became pretty evident. Um, we're getting better. Um, but how do we do that? I'd like to see some goals, um, set with that. How do we get there? Um, it may be trial and error and trying different things and figuring out what works. Um, but I, I think we would owe it to the people who may fill our seats in the future to try to figure that out, um, so that that helps going forward. I think that not only does that help with the, um, board and administration, but also with the community. So I'd like to, I would love to see an umbrella about effective meetings. And part of that, we heard from, uh, Mr. Christina was about board retreats. How those can be helpful as well.
Yep. And hopefully also if we.
Yeah, bloody Saturday.
If we, if we adjust the agenda a little bit too, hopefully that can have a trickle over effect onto the meetings. Just taking a quick look at the calendar. Keep saying spam risk.
Andy, I have a, a question about that is, um, I have constantly training through New Hampshire Municipal Association on workshops and effective meetings and how to move things forward and how to get things done, you know, according to the RSAs. Do we have anything like that through the School Board Association? Do they hold meetings like that that teach how to hold effective meetings?
They actually just, they just did one, um, and I wasn't able to attend. But Barrett indicated last week that it, it was reported, so it's available right now. So I'm gonna watch that. Um, generally when they do things like that as new, um, if it catches on and it gets enough views or whatever, they'll offer it in person. So I'm hoping in the fall, um, that they're back to normal and it's not all. I, I learn much better if I'm there with my peers and listening to the questions and everything like that. So I would encourage all of us. My first year, um, that first fall, I guess, I went to probably four or five workshops between September and December. And they're, they're great. And like I said, it's not always, you know, a lot of it, you sit there and the content is like, oh yeah, I could have guessed that. But having sixteen or thirty other people that are also new school board members or whatever in the room with you, asking questions that you might not have thought of, to me is the most helpful part. Um, but they have, they have quite a catalog and, but I, I definitely think it's more effective if you can go and sit down. And we're lucky because it's right there.
Right.
I, I've sat next to people that are like, where'd you come from? Like around the corner, where'd you come from? Lancaster? Like, oh.
Yeah, cause we're gonna open the, the building on July sixth. But, um, like NHMA, I go every single year to their conference about hard road to travel because things change every single year about the range roads and trails and
Oh, yeah.
all that good stuff. So even though it's a workshop that I've been to, I've been to them for the last four years because changes.
Yep. Well, and I do think, you know, April mentioned, Barrett mentioned, um, retreats. It's not something I've ever been a part of in this board. But, you know, we do have a budget. It's not big, but we, we could possibly do a, a full day thing on a Saturday at the beginning of the summer, not this year, or, or the end of the summer, or a day over February, or whatever we decide on, where we do a full day and we could have Barrett come for two hours. And we could find a couple other speakers on whatever topics we're interested in. And I think we'd have the money to pay the speakers and have a, you know, rent a room somewhere, whatever we wanted to do. We could do it here to save money. But, um, I, I think that'd be worthwhile to, to just explore what else is out there.
Delegate, sorry, when, when attending the New Hampshire School Board Annual Meeting as a delegate, one thing that I've heard the past two years is about, um, providing training, not, you know, not long bits, but providing trainings at school board meetings at least once a month. And, you know, everybody's there. You make sure everyone has the same information moving forward. So, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, only one way. If there's a, I don't know how to do it. I'm just sharing information that has been talked about. I, I definitely think that could have benefited us this past year, um, and probably even going forward because we're still a young board. But, um, you know, just getting little pieces of information. But I think we would have to figure out what do we need? And what do we need as a group? Um, because it's not gonna help to have somebody come in and tell us what are our roles and responsibilities at school, as a school board member. I think we've probably all been to that training. Um, but as far as, you know, uh, goal setting, effective meetings, those type of things, right? Those are things that, there's probably more, you know, making goals for your superintendent, evaluating your superintendent, those are things we need. So we need to go out there and make sure we get that information. So we can do a good job at those things.
Yep. And, and I think, I think it'd be nice to go beyond NHSBA. Um, but I think they might be a good starting point. I think Barrett maybe will point us in the right direction of other resources that we might be able to, to bring in for things like that.
Well, going through our governance, um, course that we did, Primex and any, um, New Hampshire School Board Association and New Hampshire Municipal Association were all together in these meetings. So, you know, a lot of good information that they have. You know, it's church and state, you know, you got school, you got, you know, town. But there, there was a lot of great information out there. But I know my organization uses life resources. So I don't know, does, does the school, does the SAU or the school itself have that kind of resources?
Can you explain what that is?
Like an online, like, like Gartner usually does. Like a, it's a subscription service where all of your employees can log in and take training.
Well, it's through.
Very, variable cost.
Well, yeah, it could be a cost, but more often there's a very large group of, um, life resources is, you know, they, you know, too much stress. I just had to listen to one the other day surviving COVID, you know, kinda thing. It was awesome, but we survived. Um, but you know, things like that.
Yeah, our, our liability company, Primex.
Okay.
Has lots of that stuff. And it, and so I've been to things where there was crossover. There, there were municipal folks there in the same room because some of it is the same.
Could we get a, a listing from them of what they offer?
Yep.
Cause my organization itself, because if you have health insurance with us, we come and we do all these classes and trainings for free because you already have it. So I thought maybe school care might.
It's, um, it's through Primex, our liability insurance carrier.
Okay.
But.
But does school care have anything?
Sure. Not that I know of, but I can ask Colleen, our HR coordinator.
Yeah, that'd be great.
They might, and I just don't know. Yeah, sure.
And it, and we could also pick different, you know, if it was something that I'm only interested in, then I could do it instead, instead of the, the whole board.
True.
I think ongoing education for the board. And I, I agree with what Andy said. There is value when going through it as a board. Um, you know, it's different, you know, it's great if you have individual interest, but sometimes it's, you know, kinda like class, right? I heard this, did you hear this? This is my take. Oh gosh, I got that wrong, you know, or I misunderstood. It, it's also a bonding experience for everyone there. So there's multiple benefits of that ongoing. It also helps, um, you know, these little training bits also help educate the public at large, which is great.
Does the, does the New Hampshire School Board Association have a conference like NHMA does? It's two days, you go, it's a whole day, you've got different courses.
I don't think they do. I don't think they do an annual conference. I just think they have the, the break, you know, throughout the year, they get, put the calendar out for PD.
Okay.
But Barrett and they, they, in the school board updates that they send all of you, there's usually embedded, um, a calendar and they announce what PD's coming up. So there will be stuff there. Um, but Barrett did say, April, to your point, um, that he would be willing to come back. And I think you're right. We just need to know what it is we want. You know, just, oh Barrett, could you? And so it's personalized. Like the Pembroke Board would really be interested in hearing more about X, Y, and Z. And he could target, um, and answer questions. And I mean, they, they obviously, he had referrals for, um, some of the goal setting we were interested in.
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning. And so I think, you know, you use the resources. There may be more resources out there that we don't know about. We need to figure out what our resources are. So ongoing education for the board.
So, um, I've got Amy's email up here and I'll buzz through these quickly. So I, I haven't read through it yet. So some of these may be redundant. Um, and not focused or maybe they'll all be great. I don't know. But I'll, I'll just buzz through them quickly and then we can decide if we wanna. Absolutely. I will. In fact, I'll do it right now because otherwise I will forget.
My first did not receive that. Is it possible we can have access to that document as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Well, Andy sending that out, I mean, just a thought that occurred to me is it's important that we focus on what is a goal versus a directive. Some of these things that we want may be easy to cross off and not really a goal. And I think we're gonna have to do some more hashing through that and coming back together. And figuring that out.
I think, when, April, when you were talking earlier, I was thinking the board needs an IEP, right? Cause that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, exactly. Everyone does, right?
Um, because when I was looking at the, um, the goal for the budget, I was thinking, I, I think this is what you were getting at, that, well, that's nice. We're providing it in a transparent way. What does that mean? You know, we, like you said, we will by December first post our draft budget. You know, what are the objectives in order to achieve that goal? Because that's a very nice goal, but.
Right. It's not a smart goal.
Right. And ten people could interpret that ten different ways. So I think you do need to kinda find maybe, I'm, I'm gonna suggest like two or three overarching goals and then fill in.
Does everyone know what a smart goal is?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if I could name all the letters right off the top of my head, but. Okay, so here's what Amy has, and this is from, um, March. I just forwarded it to all of you. Um, so I'm, I'm skipping some of the text and going right to the list. So have board packets ready by the Friday before board meetings. I think we already touched on that. Distributing the entire board packet to the public, except what is exempt from being public. I think we already hit that. Expanding and further routineizing outgoing communications at the Pembroke School District so that it includes Facebook, website, website of each school, shared Google Drives of all committees and one call now. Um, so I think we hit most of that. Revamp the website, we hit that. Um, performance evaluation of superintendent, we hit that. Social event for the board by the board with families, like a meet and greet late summer outside. Not sure about the rules on that being a meeting, but sounds fun. Number seven is, um, try to put together a three-year work plan. Um, work towards a three-year budgeting process and institute a meeting end time cap. I know that's one that she told me seventy-four times that she was gonna bring up. Is that we schedule our meetings and say they're gonna be from six thirty to, I believe she suggested nine thirty. And that's, that's it. So I think we actually hit a lot of those already.
You know, as you're reading through that and I'm hearing some of the same things, I really feel like we need some sort of facilitator to help us navigate through this, to say, put this on the parking lot, this is this. Um, I honestly, I don't think that we as a board have the experience to go forward without some handholding and some help. Um, to really have effective and meaningful goals. I think we have a lot of ideas here, some things that are probably easily resolved. But I really feel like we need help. We don't even have a strategic plan. And we heard last week, yes, it was last week. Oh, we're required to have one. That's a major issue that we don't have one. Like, and honestly, I just, you know, that just can't, like, that should be a goal. If we're required by law to have something and we are not in compliance, we do need to address that.
Should that be on our first agenda for our, our first meeting in August?
Did you guys see the, um, resources I put in the drive from Barrett? Because he gave us, I think, the, the contact of that person's name. I didn't look at it carefully, but, so he did follow through and hook us up with someone that we might want to think about contracting with. We could, I could ask that person for more information.
That would be fantastic.
If you want me to.
Yeah. I would absolutely support that. I wanna make sure that this board is in compliance with what we have been charged to do from the state of New Hampshire. Number one, we have a duty to do that for the citizens of Pembroke.
So I'm gonna try my hand at summarizing some stuff. If I miss anything important, just shout it out. But I think that I think one of the overarching topics that we have is facilities in, um, you know, keeping abreast of what's going on with our facilities, making a decision about, um, additional space and possibly the Grange Building. And then I think we have board, you know, internal reviews that we need to work on, um, those being effective meetings, possibly revised agendas, possibly the bi-monthly, you know, one work session, one regular meeting type thing. Patty's evaluation process, strategic planning, that type of thing. Um, and then I think we have some community goals as far as the culture climate survey, um, being more in, in touch with the police department. And then the transparency piece of board packets and Facebook pages and stuff like that. I think those are kind of the three large groups. Does that, um, I think the bud, budgeting fit, that might be a separate thing. Um, but the budget transparency and, and budgeting process, I guess would be number four.
Andy, regarding the, I'm not sure what the board mates think, but regarding the community piece, um, one thing again that we hear often is, um, people who don't have children here do not know what's going on. Um, you know, to have more of a community-based school, we need to figure out how to reach out to those people and let them know what's available here. If there's gonna be a play, right? How do we communicate that? Because that is a community event. Um, the community outreach part, again, it's to highlight what we have going on that's really great. We want you to be a part of it, right?
That's been, that is such a struggle with, with all boards. We've been talking about the same thing in Deerfield. Like how, how do you reach your community? You know, you don't, we don't have an, an email list like we do with our families. We don't have all that contact info. So coming up with creative ways to reach out.
Yeah. And I think Facebook helps. I think the sign helps too.
Yeah.
Um, I, just to, this is not really worth anything, but since nobody's watching anyway, I'll share a story. Um, I am technically published. Uh, I attended a conference and I presented at it in San Diego with my boss. This is in two thousand and eleven, I think. Um, and the topic that we chose to present on and write a paper on was effective communication. Um, it stemmed from a time, so part of my responsibilities at the time were all of the kind of publicly used computers on a college campus, whether they be lab computers or library computers or the one house machine up in the front of a lecture hall. And that was actually the problem. I sent out an email at the beginning of the summer. And one of the things that I did was I refreshed the image on the computer. So I updated Windows, I updated, put all the new versions of all the software on it. I, I basically brought every house computer up to date, right? And so I sent out an email at the beginning of the summer and I said, I'm going to do this two weeks before the first day of classes. And then two weeks before the first, two weeks before that day, I sent out the same email again. And I said, this is gonna happen two weeks before the first day of classes. And then the Monday of the week I was actually going to do it, I sent out an email again to all professors and said, I'm going to update this on Thursday, right? And so I did. And the first day of classes, um, my CIO called me into her office. And there was a accounting professor that was insisting that I be fired because he was embarrassed in front of his whole class. Because he came in and he did his whole first day presentation on the house computer. And when he came on the first day of classes, everything was different. Had a new version of Microsoft Office, blah, blah, blah. So he was embarrassed. He came in three weeks before. So he was embarrassed. He came in three weeks before classes started, before I had updated. I verified that he had gotten all of these emails. So I went and I talked to him. I said, Dan, what could I have done differently? Like you have three emails at varying, you know, intervals. What could I have done that got your attention? And he, after some conversation, he admitted, he said, honestly, I get so many emails. I read so much stuff. Unless you came and knocked on my office door and told me, I probably wouldn't have gotten the information. So my boss and I took this idea of like, what could we do better? And we did, but our conclusion at the end of the day at this conference was still, we don't know. It's, it's a struggle because I think at the, at the end of the day, if people want information, they go out and find it. And you can throw information at people all day long and they're only going to absorb the stuff that they're in. I mean, the number of spam messages I've gotten during this meeting alone, I don't want to read. You know what I mean? So I think it's, it's just an ongoing struggle. And if we, if the websites are better, I think that's the biggest step. Because if somebody's like, what are we going to do this weekend? What's going on around town? And then they should be in the habit of checking the school website to see if there's a play or whatever. But, you know, outside, I don't think we can ever have a town-wide one call now.
Well, I would propose for the town of Pembroke, because there are people who are not actively on Facebook or may not actively be checking the website, maybe a quarterly newsletter, right? Again, highlighting our accomplishments. This is what's coming up. Because I do believe that would be much better received than when the board sends out a postcard saying, come and vote for our budget. And that's the only time you hear from the board. People like seeing their kids, you know, picture in a newsletter or on a website. We have to do better about broadcasting what's going well. And that may be, I don't know the answer, but Facebook and email to a limited audience is not enough.
Like Andy was saying, and I, I agree wholeheartedly. And how many times, well, we don't do the newsletter in town anymore, right?
We voted it back in.
Okay. So you voted back, but like, nobody's reading it. It's thrown in the trash. It gets mismailed somewhere else, wherever the case may be. It's like, you can lead the horse to the water, but after that, you've done everything you can. So, you know, moving forward, yeah, it's a great idea, but guess what? You know, it's going to cost money. Again, you're going to end up in the same situation. If people are looking for it, they will find it. Right. And I don't know if that's always been true up till now.
It isn't.
Because I have found people that actively look for our information on our website and have trouble finding it. That's why I mentioned like, our website being updated is going to be big. And I'm, I'm including that in, in my statement just then. Everything's updated, easier to find, easier to use, and yes. But, you know, there's only so much. Newsletter is a great idea. Find the money for it, first of all. And secondly, effectiveness.
Do we have a school newspaper? Okay. All right. So the main reason I ran for school board is because I don't, I feel town and school physically are right up the street, but they don't communicate. What the town does, we have a list of people who want to know information. And every night, every time the selectmen meet, after that meeting, I'm not saying Patty has to, but after that meeting, David will go through and send the, he has a master list of people who want to hear what happened in the selectman meeting. So if we have something like that, then maybe we would, you know, we have a master email list and maybe some people would say, you know, my grandkids are all gone through their school, but I would still like to go to the bake sale, or I would still like to go to whatever. If we have a list of emails just saying, this is happening.
Or does, I don't know what the contract looks like, but does one call now support that? Do you have to have a kid in, like? So I wonder if that's something that we could talk to them about, because it might, they might have an option where we could have, if we could have a separate one even, like, the people could go to the website and sign up themselves for, for whatever.
Or NICSIL alert.
I was just going to say the thing that, the only thing that I know about is NICSIL, and I'm wondering, I don't know how that works or if, you know, it doesn't, I would think it doesn't have to be an emergency. If you, if you enroll, if you, I've signed up for NICSIL. Yeah, that's what I did. And, and then you get, if there's a road closed or an accident, so why couldn't we, I don't know what we can push out. You know, if it's an email or what they allow, but that was the only thing I was thinking of too.
I mean, I think, I think to pull it all together, you're not going to, you're not going to hit everybody in town. You can't.
No.
And you're not going to please everyone.
Right. If, but if we can give them an easy way, hey, you can go to the school website now and you can sign up here with your email address and you will start getting stuff.
But we have that awesome sign too. So if we put as one of our goals every week, something will be promoted on that sign. We, you know, Three Rivers Hill, at least one event, because there's always something happening.
Yeah, that sign is always populated constantly.
Right. But I mean, it's have, you know, it, you know, have a good day kind of thing, have a great vacation. But if we put as our goal, maybe one item.
Sorry, just as far as community engagement promoting our schools, during the time that I've been on this board, I believe it's only been one time that we've had students come before the board. You know how nice it would be if a student received recen- you know, recognition from the board? They, uh, had a certain achievement, please come to the board, meaning we want to shake your hand, right?
Geographic test.
I, I will say, um, you know, along those lines, one of the, one of my favorite memories of being on the board, and this was pre-pandemic times, was going to Sandy's classroom and learning about penguins. I would love to do more stuff like that. And I think it gets us out there publicly. You know, I, I remember being in school. I knew whose friends' parents were on the school board, but I didn't know what the school board did. Um, it'd be nice to, I, I agree. It'd be nice to be in front of students more. Ryan comes here. I'd love to see the, the student senate representative come here.
If we have a national merit scholar, you know, please come. We'd like to congratulate you as a board, right?
Oh, we had that drama.
Get your picture taken when the Pembroke School, you know, like.
We had robotics too. The kids brought their robots to the meeting.
And I think it's, you know, I hate to keep blaming it, but that stuff wasn't able to be done this past year. But I would like to, I would like to think that this next year we can become more involved.
Increase our community engagement and highlight positive.
Certainly. Sure. Right? Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause even like, I was thinking about it the other, and you know, we're so busy and everything's been crazy this year, but I would have loved to have the board walk the new, um, learning space at Hill. You know what I mean? Stuff like that, that they've spent a lot of time on that. So I think that's a great idea, April. I do, if, I don't know, how portable is that thing? Cause I like the idea of rotating the meetings too.
Yeah, we, that's what we used to do every, well, not every time, but we, they were at PA, but we did each school once a year, the others, the other three.
Yeah. If that, if that can be moved, I think part of the reason we stopped doing that is because we got the camera in the library. Um, so if that thing can be moved without it being a huge task, that'll be cool.
I think we just have to be careful about how we schedule those, you know, maybe, um, we're going to hit different schools. If we're going to do it more than once, maybe for this month, we're at this building the next month, because, you know, sometimes you can remember where in the school board meeting is, but you might forget where will they meet this time. So.
Oh, I'll do that.
I will.
I, I did.
I've done that.
Yeah, I've had text messages from board members. We.
Uh, that's a good point too. Maybe, maybe if we want to discuss quickly, I, I think what we're doing now works very well. And I would propose that next year, we, you know, obviously have in-person meetings, probably back in the library unless we're going to another school. But having the video option and the WebEx, um, I, I don't think it's appropriate to allow public comment from online. I think that could get way out of control way fast. I like the idea of if you're going to come, you need to come. So basically what we've been doing for these past few weeks, um, I would like to see continue as far as meetings for next year.
Um, to that note, if someone, for whatever reason, I want to be charitable, to think maybe they cannot attend for whatever reason. If someone feels strongly that they want a statement read, a member of the public, I know you have to, you know, somehow there's got to be a threshold. Would, could it be an ask of that person to please read this statement at the meeting?
So I think, I'm not sure if we have a policy, but it's always been, when I sat down with Deandra School and asked him what it was like to be chair, um, it, it was explained to me, anybody, um, and I guess for the record, anybody that wants anything said at one of these meetings on, at public comment, if you can't come, you can email me or whoever's chair, or anybody else for that matter, um, and ask that it be read, and we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. I, I, we had such great participation, uh, when we were meeting online, and so I would want that to be stifled. So I, I just, that's great to know. So if someone can't attend, but, you know, has a concern, they can bring it before the board besides an email.
And some people are not comfortable speaking publicly too. So they want to, they can submit it to me or Andy or anyone, and we can make sure, print it off and have someone read it during public comments.
That's a really good point. And I think something that I'll try to do over the summer is, some of those things like that should be said once in a while. So maybe at that first August 3rd meeting, um, and, and maybe again, and once the school year starts, because I got a feeling August won't be um, attended very well by the public anyway. But just to review some of those things, like these are policies and procedures. This is how public comment works. This is, you know, other alternate methods. I, I think getting some of our rules and procedures out there a little bit more so people understand them is, is a good idea.
So I have a question about next steps. It's great that we sat here, we talked about hopes and dreams, things we hope we're going to do next year. What is going to be our next step? How do we move this forward besides this conversation? Because a lot of times what happens is when I've been on the board, we have this meeting and really little else is done to make these hopes and dreams come true. So we need to talk about next steps, when we can meet again, because typically we do not meet in the summer. But goodness, we've got some work to do, um, to, you know, to make these things real goals, not just hopes and dreams.
In my mind, I'm, and this is, it's going to sound like cop out, and I promise I don't mean it that way. But for many of the kind of, um, what I listed as administrative, our personal things, excluding Patty's evaluation. But the revised agendas and the possibility of the two, you know, different types of meetings in a month and things like that. Um, I would like to come to a consensus tonight on some of those things that we want to do. And then, um, kind of just give it some time, because we as a board, other than, I mean, this is the first time we've been able to meet without masks. It's what, the fifth time that we've been able to meet even in person. I'd like to give it, you know, figure out what we want to do about agendas and about the meeting schedule. But other than that, I would say, you know, let's give it August, September into October and see how we're doing. And if we're back to a point where we're having two-hour meetings, great. You know, if, if it starts creeping up again and we've got a backlog of 25 policies and then, then I think we can drill down and be like, hey, we really need to do something about this. But I feel like we have not ever been able to hit our stride as a board. I mean, it was literally the meeting after you got elected that we met in Patty's office and closed all the schools, you know?
I just wanted to make one suggestion is the, if, if Patty could reach out with the strategic planning, um, sooner rather than later. Because if we're not in compliance, we need to fix that ASAP. And if we need to have an extra meeting, you know, in two weeks or next week or whatever, we should plan on that.
Do we need to, I don't know, is it a law that we do strategic planning or that we just have goals?
Um, I don't have it with me.
The verbiage that was in there, I, I think it was long-term, but I'll definitely.
Well, April's looking. The other thing I would like to suggest is that we put at least two items on the agenda for our goal. So I would support, I would like budget, because that's going to come up sooner rather than later. And the communications as a second one, as the information out there, um, like the second one, send positive information regarding the school. I mean, we, we can probably, you know, rearrange that some bit, but if we could put that, you know, those two, they're big. But at least we could come back in August and say, you know, I would be thinking, okay, this is how, what I would think. And then we can discuss, and then, you know, have a time limit. And then the communication one is, you know, how to get the information out to the residents of our packet.
I'm going to put those on for August 3rd, you're saying? I'm, I'm very good with that.
So on, on the handout that we received from New Hampshire School Board at our previous meeting, on page five, under strategic planning, planning, long and short-term goals, plans and objective, it does state that NHDOE Rule 303.04G imposes upon boards the duty to quote, "develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives," end quote. So we would have to look up that exact rule, but we don't have those. And if that's.
But could we call the Hampshire School Board and ask them to give us more information on how quickly we need that?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we can get, I, I would say, so let me ask you this, Patty. What do you expect our agenda load will be on August 3rd?
That's a little hard to predict.
I'm just saying, like, typical first, first, i- is, is there, I mean, you're going to be approving hires throughout the summer anyway.
And then I'll probably bring the list of names to you at that first meeting. Um, I, I think that, yeah, usually it's bus routes and we actually have really good news on that front, that we have two drivers that are in training for Pembroke. So if, and Linda is working really hard, Wendy and John already did a survey and we think we could do it with six buses. If that's the case, we, I don't even want to say it out loud, we may actually be okay with transportation, but that, that could be a potential problem. Do you want to say it? Go ahead.
Oh, I'll wait till you finish, but I just wanted to.
But in terms of back-to-school plan, unless something really shakes up over the summer, which I hope it does not, I think we're going to be okay. I think we're going to be pretty much back to normal.
Um, so I made notes, um, and that New Hampshire School Board does not do that. They do have a consultant. That facilitates, guides boards through strategic planning and that timeframe, it generally takes four to six months. We're sitting here doing nothing when we have work to do. It may not be, you know, and we could really focus on that. That's my concern.
You, you may be able to put something in place outside of the strategic planning process in the meantime. Like, you know, your long-range plans could be to expand a building, whatever, you know, wherever it may be. You could talk about some three to five-year plans in the meantime, and then come up with your goals for the short-term objectives while we're engaging that service, so that maybe at least you have something. It may not be your ultimate, um, long-range plan when you're done, but you might have something.
Is there someone that we could talk to, um, at the Department of Education who handles compliance to find out? At least let them know this is on our radar. We are aware. I just want to, my biggest concern is I want to make sure this board is not out of compliance. The last thing we need is bad publicity. Um, I don't want to be sitting on our laurels when there's work, important work to do that we're charged to do.
I can get some advice from Barrett if you want. He could, he could probably advise.
One thing I would avoid, are not, that's a Davidson public, is not to call the DOEs. And know that we're, know that we're out of compliance with what you, we are, we're out of compliance with what you read. We know this already. End of the radar, work on it, move it forward, we get in compliance. Now, resources, you know, stuff like that? Yeah, sure. Certainly. Let's say, you know, hey, we're out of compliance.
Well, I think we are. Like, I want to make, you know, like, who better than the experts, right? That's going to check into that to let us know what do we need to do to make sure we are in compliance.
And you could word it that way, which is completely different.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
And it could, it could be as simple, but it could be as simple as this meeting is the beginning of us getting in compliance, because we are talking about.
Because it's just, we, we just became aware of this previous meeting, right?
Do you do one from your car?
A Dunka Dunk?
Yes.
I think that we should probably take caution in saying it was a rough year. It's time to put that behind us and get to work on what we can do better. No, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, Andy, I'm not personally criticizing you. I'm really not. But I think as a board, it's time to move forward. And I think we all, that's why we're all here talking about these goals. You know, what's done is done. We can't do anything about the past. We can only do about what we're going to do in the future, starting today.
You know, I guess I have to go along with Andy. He's got a young family. I know.
Grandbaby.
Grandkids. We've got that stuff in there. So I've got a little more time on my. Had like 30 type meetings, up leading up into, um, school district, so, for the election. So I think, yeah, this is like, everybody can do your thinking, you can do your working, but. Yes, exactly. Been doing, send you what I have and. Yeah.
So, um, so on the agenda, so we're going to have the budget and we're going to have communications. So for our homework, my homework, so are we looking to come in going, this is my suggestions on our goals for budgets and the timeline that we could reach them and also for communications? Would that be our, our homework? No, but. Okay. I think it's reachable.
Reachable.
Reachable. No, no, I'm just thinking the.
Patty's suggestion as far as that goes, great.
Right, right, just. Right, right.
And the principals used to have a more, um, involved, they were more involved in the process. And I think on that, on that Saturday meeting, they actually used to do presentations, right? Sandy, yeah, I remember that. Um, you know, you would, we would like to hear from Mr. Marston, what things you're looking like Anne's talking about, you know? What kinds of things are you looking for? And it's the big things or I'm, I'm looking at a new, um, science series and it's going to be $10,000. Okay. Well, tell me about why do you need that? What is it for? Um, and they used to actually talk about their big, you know, not the typical supplies that they ask for every year, but what they're asking for and why they're asking for it. They did little presentations.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, R was relevant. Sorry. It's, I would think it'd be easier for a budget person sitting there in the committee meeting, but I also think it's easier for residents because they're not going to know what, you know, line 1200, 306 or whatever. But I would also like to suggest, um, as one of our goals is how much does it cost for each school? You know, and Amber does send us the Excel spreadsheet and we can sort it ourselves. But I think if we had the residents understand that, yeah, you know, PA costs this many millions. Yeah, we're down a lot of students, but we still have to support the building.
No, that's what's in the back of my mind right now is that we're down, we're down a position. But when you offered your services, I was like, yes.
There you go.
Anybody that's willing to help would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, Excel's fun. I love it. It would show the fixed costs. We can't touch the retirement center, you know, that they keep pushing more and more back on the communities.
I think, I hope it helps people this year when we did the summary sheet too, because I think that was a, it was nice to have that instead of like you. I think that was your idea, Anne, that, you know, help people understand what are you voting on? What is, what is this warrant article and what does it contain?
Right, right. Warrant articles are not easy to write and because you've got the RSA.
Right, it's very specific language. Right. What is this for?
Yes.
So I think that was helpful.
I think he's beaten into all of us.
Yeah. Could I just make, um, one suggestion? I know we're not going to meet until after CIP. But when we go, when we do the CIP and, you know, Josh comes up and says, you know, we need this amount of money. We need, I don't know, what was it? $800,000 in ADA, you know, where? You know, cause when, you know, G knows, when you go to CIP, you go to PD and you look to see, you know, you meet at the physical buildings.
I think they've done that before for the schools. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Cause I mean, when it comes to ADA, basically it's focused on the SAU.
Yeah, that's, I'm concerned about that when I saw that on the list. Yeah. I mean, review the SAU accessibility issues and develop a plan for ADA compliance. That part of the building, was it 1906?
It's old.
Can you imagine if we touched that? How many people would be raining down on us? Just residents?
Well, and that's when you, I, in the past, well, they, they engaged an architect previously.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, you'd have to engage the architect, say, hey, look at, it needs to look exactly the same. Make it safe.
I think some of it though, um, is the steps. I mean, you, you know, there are, yeah, there are things that you can change. And the ins, the inside's already been renovated. So in terms of the historical piece of the inside, I think it's okay. There's this very rickety chairlift so that anyone from the public that came in that needed a handicap accessible vehicle of some sort to get them up, what we have now is not safe. So there's some things that are pretty, they're pretty significant.
When residents see this, they think you're ripping off the front of the building.
Yeah, no.
And.
Right.
They come to town hall and they come to my house saying, why are you touching?
And Josh is, I mean, he, if you've seen the wood and the, and the detail at the SAU that he, in that, on that specific building, he's kept up and painted and it's beautiful. He does a really good job. So yeah, I know he would never let it, let that happen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
I can set them all.
Yeah, yeah. Let them know we're not doing anything. Yeah.
Um, I just had a quick question about busing. Um, we have two major bridges that are going to be shut down. So how do you, do you get in touch? Does my DPW get in touch for the SAU?
We usually get bridge closure notifications in the mail. I haven't seen one. I think they have to come.
Because North Pembroke. Yeah.
It is, I think it is, it is, I think you're right. I forget the, the department, but we get them from the state. Yeah, that's it, in the mail.
I, I was asking at the selection meeting last night if you would be, how quickly you'd be informed because the one on North Pembroke Road, that's going to be July, August, September, shut.
Yeah, if someone could email that information, I can pass it on to the transportation company. Yeah, right away.
Bridge, there's no, the one on 28, that's not going to start till 22, late 22. So because of all the cost of, of materials right now, um, so that we might miss another whole year, but this bridge is.
Yeah, if you could ask someone to email that information, um, we need to let the bus company know because they're going to be working on our routes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Right, but I want, I want the school buses to know before. Well. Yeah. Well, because on 28, they're going to only have one lane for years. But this years, but this one, they're, they're nothing for three months completely. So I wanted to make sure that you know, so when they start the buses.
Well, I guess the question is, do the buses, do the buses go into Concord back in Pembroke? That's right there.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. That's why I was worried when I asked DPW last night. I asked BJ, I'm like, does Patty know?
They don't, they don't come down that hill though. Yeah, whatever it is.
It's a good thing we're not in the day-to-day operations, right?
Thank you.
Anyway, okay, weeds.
Yep.
Turn it off and back on maybe. There you go.
So we have our homework.
Yeah. So, so I think to April's point, um, we have some umbrella items.
Yeah, I think it was 5,000. No, for to go through the process. Yeah, the process.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I can do that.
Well, I'm just curious, would it be possible for that information to be disseminated before the August meeting? So as we're mulling over all this, we have that in the back of our mind too.
Yeah, I was, or get the, the consultant's information.
I will, when I get it, I'll put it in the drive and then if anyone that's working on a list can get it to me ahead of time, we can try to consolidate and have it in the drive for other people to look at.
Right.
So.
At least a week before the meeting.
I have a, a quick question. Because we're SEU 53, we've got five different districts. Can we ask what Allentown's doing, what Chitchester's doing, what Epsom's doing? Because they may already have a strategic plan outline or they said, oh, this is who we use or this is a guide that we use. I don't like reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, Chitchester does a retreat at one of the board members' homes, I think, every summer. And they do a similar process. Um, Deerfield, we had a consultant come or a facilitator probably four or five years ago now. And it, it is helpful to have someone that's not involved in the conversation, um, help focus and write things and keep lists for you. That is very helpful. It wasn't a strategic planning specialist. It was just someone that facilitated meetings. Um, and they did a great job and it was very helpful. So that, once you go through it, then you can do it on your own a little bit easier. Um, and then, you know, you just keep track of what your long-term goals are. And then the thing, okay, these are, my, in my experience, you really, that's why I said, just pick a couple of broad topics. Because otherwise you have a page of goals and, and you, at the end of the year, it's like, did we get anything done? There's so many of them.
Right.
Um, you know, so just make it, figure out what you can accomplish in a year and then what's going to be more of a two, three, five-year out. You have to post it. Yeah, you have, any, any gathering of the board, um, wherever you do it, has to be posted. They can, they're welcome to come.
And if you remember, um, Mr. Christina talked about, um, some of those retreats sometimes happen, you know, not in the same city or town where, you know, your district is and you still have to post those.
Yep, absolutely.
You know.
I think you post it as a work session.
Yep. Yeah, can it just be a posting? It doesn't have to be an agenda. Yep.
But if we all meet at Target accidentally.
That's okay. Yeah.
That's okay.
But if you plan it.
Business.
Um, this is not goals oriented. I'm just wondering at the conclusion of this meeting, is there a need to go, to have a non-meeting? No. Okay, I have nothing. Thank you. Our next meeting is August. And the meeting place, has that been determined? Oh, that's a good question. We can go back in the library or, or in here, if you're comfortable in the library.
Then we're staying here.
Right. Right. Well, the.
I think Jean decided.
You know, entry to the building, you know, is, is a concern. We can have one door unlocked, you know, to here versus unlocking and then goodness knows, you don't know where someone could go on the way to the library. So that's also in today's world, unfortunately, something we need to think about.
Please.
I second that.
The town had to start paying minute takers. Yeah, can't get volunteers. What's the cost? $12 an hour, maybe?
I, yeah, Sandy, yeah, Sandy, I mean, I, I, Sandy gets a stipend and it doesn't change and that's.
Well, the art.
A concern because, yeah.
So we had to because.
When you add all those meetings, it's.
It's a hard job to do.
Lot of time.
Do we need a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn?
Second. Hi.